Test.
Sweater on, he's locked.
Yeah. Go.
Oh, God.
First prayer. Ready on the left. I will call to order approximately 7:00 PM, Monday, December 16th, 2024, our regularly scheduled city council meeting. But the minutes reflect that all members of council are present in person, along with our city attorney, Mr. Daniel Hughes. We appreciate being up here and keeping it straight. Our city administrator, Mrs. Seth Duncan, our assistant city administrator, Mr. Greg Saxton, and along with the lady who keeps us all walking straight, our city clerk, Ms. Cindy Miller, along with our various department heads. And I'm guessing a lot of proud parents. So glad that you're here, along with our citizens online as well as in person. And you'll hear more about these fine men and women. Want to call them kids, but most of you are kids to me. So anyway, so from that standpoint, thank you for being here. First item on our agenda beyond the welcome is our invocation and pleasure allegiance. I believe, Mr. Steenback.
Jews bow with me, please. God, thank you so much for the opportunity to come and to be here. Lord, we thank you for this season. We celebrate your birth and enjoy family and friends and all of the fun things that come with the holidays, Lord, but we also lift up those in our community, in our midst, that are dealing with loss, pain, suffering at this time. We ask you to encourage and strengthen them as well. God, thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this, this council and the city and to help lead and guide it. Lord, give us wisdom and humility in your name I pray. Amen. Stand with me, please.
Let me just say, United States of America, to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Steenback. One of the proud moments to have the opportunity to do is proclamations and presentations. And I would ask Mr. Allgood, if you'd join me down front, one of our presentations. The moments we're most proud for is when we get to recognize some of our youth. And tonight, in our presence, we have a Malden High School swimmer, Oliver Stoll, sorry, who at the state championships in Columbia in October, won the 500 freestyle and second in the 200 freestyle. He also has signed to swim at West Virginia University. So, Mr. Stoll, if you would come forward.
So we want to congratulate Oliver Stoll for winning the 500 freestyle and finishing second in the 200 freestyle, the state championship in Columbia, South Carolina in October, given this day, the 16th day of December, 2024. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just a quick note, I will say that it's great to see the Malden High School swim team and how far it's come, particularly over the last year with the brand new coach. I know you had Dean Perry as your coach, and he did a fabulous job this year. So congratulations to all the swimmers, but in particular you, particularly as you head off to, is it West Virginia? Excellent, congratulations.
The pleasure is to recognize our police explorers and I'll recognize our officer, Isti. Yep, here she comes. Ms. King, you want to join down front? You have four minutes.
So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Isti Ross. I'm one of the lieutenants on patrol. This young group of teenagers you see in front of you meets with us every week. They have an interest in law enforcement as a career, and they meet with us and learn what it is to be a law enforcement officer. We take the skills that they learn with us each week, and we take them to competition. And in November, we were invited to Lawrenceville, Georgia, to a competition we've never been to before. And we participated in 10 events there. It was a blind competition where we didn't know what the events were. The teams were chosen at random by the advisors from down there. And we kind of went and swept the competition. We got a few trophies. We ended up in first place overall. First place in felony traffic stops, second place in routine traffic stops, second place in first place in impaired handcuffing, third place in building clearing, third place in physical agility test, and second place in domestic violence. So these, these young people went out there and showed out and represented the city well. So this is just kind of our opportunity to present them to the city, present them to city council, who hands down supports us, no matter what our endeavors are. We could not have this post without you guys. So thank you guys so much for all your support that you give us throughout the years.
I didn't know the microphone was going to get passed to me. Thank y'all for being a part of our city and a part of our explorer, explorer program. Thank you, Lieutenant Ross, and, and all your backup support because we couldn't do it without you guys and all of the, the time and the belief that you put into these young people. So congratulations, we're proud of y'all, and thanks for being here tonight.
So I want to represent our, introduce J. Van Hill. He's our post sergeant. And Malana Opapari, get behind me, and Don Hedrick. And Braylon Austin. And Rowney Maloff, I did not pronounce that correctly, I know, I'm sorry. Yes, sure. And Eli Leglevla, I did not pronounce that correctly either, I'm sorry. And Evan Crank. So these are the young folks that were in Georgia with us. We have a few more that weren't able to make it to the Georgia competition. And I don't want to let the meeting end without introducing our other advisors. Corporal Burbage, Corporal Baker, and Corporal Sechek are present here today. Could not do it without their help. We also have Corporal Reyes that helps with us. Corporal Amaroso with Woodruff PD comes and volunteers his time with us. And Lance Corporal McCord from Highway Patrol comes and volunteers his time with us. He's actually a product of the Explorer Post. So again, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for being here, your support. Thank you, guys, again, for all of your support.
Now, an opportunity to hear the state of the city from the chamber's point of view, two of the busiest people I know of, Kim and Ozzy. Be sure that the green light's on.
Thank you, Mayor Merritt and council members for having us here this evening, as this is my final month as chair of the Greater Malden Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to briefly reflect on this year's accomplishments. Community Impact hosted successful events like the Oyster Roast, the Halloween Business, and Community Event in partnership with the Malden Cultural Center, Breakfast with Santa, and the Malden Christmas Parade. These events brought residents and businesses together showcasing Malden's vibrant spirit. Business Support welcomed new members, expanded new, excuse me, expanded network opportunities and strengthened programs like Leeds Group and our business roundtables to incorporate area manufacturers. Partnerships built strong collaborations with the Malden Cultural Center to enhance community offerings and engagement. Looking ahead, focused on simplifying membership structures, preparing initiatives to further support small businesses, and continuing to build the bonds that make our community and businesses stronger. It has been an honor to serve as chair. Thank you to this council for your partnership and support. Together, we ensure Malden's continued growth and success. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ozzy. Appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is our reading and approval of minutes. Our city council meeting of November 18th, 2024. Those minutes have been sent out to you guys over the weekend, so you've had it to review the, any discussion, adjustments we need. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
Move we approve is presented.
Motion to approve is presented, or second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Kralin. Any discussion, adjustments, clarifications? Here none, although in favor of the minutes as submitted, November 18th, 2024, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Here none, the minutes are approved as submitted. Also in your packet was the council workshop at December the 2nd, 2024. Council's pleasure.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Motion from Ms. King, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Matney, any discussion, clarifications? Here not all in favor of the motion as approved, the minutes as submitted, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Here none, minutes as submitted. Next item on our agenda is our first public comment period. This, this public comment period is reserved for items on the agenda. So if you have something, and you should have signed up, and I have the list in front of me, just a reminder that this public comment period is for the agenda, this one's for the agenda item, preserve proper decorum, refrain from abusive and profane remarks, personal attacks on council members, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed, it's inappropriate to use a public hearing, other public comment period for the purpose of making political speeches, including threats of political action. The agenda we've got tonight will limit the comment period to three minutes. Please step, when I call your name, come to the podium, repeat your name, and present your address, please. And we will be welcome to hear your comments. The item agenda 7A has one person, Ms. Brock. Thank you for being here.
My name is Megan Brock, 311 Wild Rice Drive. I'm commenting on 7A about the approving the tax bond for the stadium. I know yours, that there's $14 million of state taxes, state and local taxes going to building, potentially building the Brideway Stadium. I'm very opposed to that. I was looking up the attendance numbers for the Greenville Triumph and for the US One Soccer League, and it looks like about 2,000 people per game is the average. So I don't understand then why we're spending $14 million in tax, in taxes to build a 10,000 person stadium. Furthermore, in 2023, the highest in the whole country in that league attendance was still under 5,000. I looked up the Greenville Triumph Facebook page, it didn't even have 10,000 likes. So I don't understand why there's a 10,000 person stadium being built in a residential area. I asked today for the traffic plan in your lease that you signed, that nobody knew was happening on October 24th, that said they had 60 days to come up with the traffic plan. There's still no traffic plan. How can you move forward with this, this project? How can you move forward with giving $4 million of local taxes to this project when you don't know where 3,000 cars are going to park? And it says on the, on your website, the plan is to shuttle them to off-site locations. Which off-site locations? What problems? Don't you think that before you do this, you should have a thorough traffic study? Actually, looking at what the, the traffic patterns shuttling people is going to cause? I also say that these games are even definitely, it's going to be in the rush hour period because now people have to give themselves another 20, 30 minutes to park, get over there. So that should change your pre-existing traffic study, what that was done in 2020. You yourself, mayor, in the last agenda, said this, this needs to be studied, that the 385 corridor is a mess, and it is. Driving past there several times recently, there were cars all the way backed up on Bridges exit. That is extremely dangerous, extremely dangerous. Like someone is going to get seriously injured. How can you then move forward with the plan when you don't even have a plan for the traffic and the cars? You don't have, you already know that the system's stressed, and you don't know how you're going to pay for any of the improvements. And there's probably a snowball effect of improvements that are going to have to be made, like for example, when people are being shuttled off-site. Well, they're probably going to have people who are going to try and park in the neighborhood. So then you're going to have pedestrian traffic going across the, the road. I mean, there's so many things that really need to be thought through to make sure this is safe, that I don't think are being thought through. And then the other thing I wanted to add was about the, the noise ordinance. On your website, you have a statement saying noise ordinance will still apply and all events be required to end by 11:00 PM. And you linked it to noise ordinance. I think you need to be more honest with people because in your noise ordinance, you gave Brideway Stadium a complete exemption in 2019. So why not just say, to tell people, rather than making it seem like the noise ordinance is applicable, why not say on the website, you know what? We gave them a full exemption. There's no, even though we say it's a matter of health and safety, which it is, because I think about the seven-year-olds who live across from that stadium, who are going to hear a beating drum till 11 o'clock at night and aren't going to sleep and aren't going to do well at school because there's no noise ordinance. And that was further extended in the lease because you also gave them an exemption for special events. So all of this, I think, needs to be more transparent, and I don't understand the rush to push this through without doing the due diligence of actually having a plan that's going to keep the community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. Had no one else signed up, so we will move to our report from our city administrator, Mr. Duncan.
Thanks, sir. So tonight I have a few items for council. So first off, city council's meeting schedule for calendar year 25 has been posted, includes committee meeting dates and council meeting nights. Committee meetings will continue to meet on the first Monday of each month at 6:00 PM, unless moved for a holiday, and council meetings are held on the third Monday at 7:00 PM. All meetings are held in the public council chambers here at 5 East Butler Road at City Hall. All meetings are open to the public. I'd like to also note that council's regular meeting in January will be held on the 20th, on holiday as scheduled. Due to scheduling conflicts with moving that, we will need to meet on the holiday. Council's FY '26 budget workshop scheduled, though, we'll get that out to everybody in January. So just some other important dates, just with all the upcoming holidays, which we're all excited about. City offices will be closed next Tuesday and Wednesday and observance of Christmas. Sanitation services will also be suspended those two days with pickups being rescheduled for Thursday and Friday. City offices will also be closed on New Year's Day with sanitation services being affected similarly. We hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season, and I do want to make a quick note that the Malden Cultural Center won the president's award from the Greater Malden Chamber of Commerce, and we're very excited about that and very, very much appreciate that recognition, but also all the hard work that our chamber does for us every day.
Mr. Duncan. Some report from our standing committees, economic planning development, Mr. Matney.
Nothing to report at this time.
Sir, public safety, Ms. King?
Nothing at this time, mayor, thank you.
Other worse, Mr. Kralin?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Sir, finance and policy, Mr. Reynolds?
All is merry and bright in finance and policy, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Recreation, Mr. Allgood?
Thank you, mayor, it's hard to believe, but actually, spring sports registration begins January 1st, so that's baseball, softball, flag football, and lacrosse.
Wow. Thank you, sir. Building codes and velvet, Mr. Steenback?
Nothing reported this time, mayor. Thank you.
Sir. Next item before us is unfinished business, second reading, Ms. Miller?
Council has been asked to approve an ordinance for the issuance and sale of accommodations tax and hospitality tax revenue bond, and this is first reading. Second reading. Excuse me.
I thought I saw you sleeping, so I wanted to bring it in. Just kidding. All right, I believe this is Finance Committee, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to pass on second reading, the ordinance number 1047, date, 1047, accommodations tax and hospitality tax revenue bond.
Thanks, sir. I have a motion for Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second and stereo for Ms. King and Mr. Matney. Let Cindy decide which one she wants to give credit to. All right, any discussion? Mr. Reynolds?
A quick comment, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is just the financial piece of a very systematic, complex, long process for a public private partnership, and this is just keeping that ball rolling. So just wanted to point out that this is one piece of a multifaceted, many-parted process. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And I believe, how long ago was it we started talking about this particular piece of that process?
A while.
Five years, I believe it is, five to six years that we started at, and our participation hasn't changed in dollar amount, five years. So good to see us moving forward.
Given that it's worth less.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Matney?
Just as a reminder, mayor, I know that there are some folks that have said that this money would be better spent on infrastructure improvements and the like, but hospitality and accommodations tax has to be used under state law on projects that encourage tourism. And that's exactly what this product, project does, and we're spending it appropriately and look forward to breaking ground.
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Matney.
Any other comment? Here none, we have a motion before us on second reading to approve an ordinance for the issue and sale of an accommodation tax and hospitality tax revenue bond. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries on second reading. Okay, Ms. Miller?
Next ordinance for second reading is the ordinance for a sale of certain property along East Butler Road to South Carolina DOT for the purpose of road improvements as part of the Butler Road Improvement Project and to authorize additional temporary construction easement for the project.
Okay, I believe this has come in from Public Works, Mr. Kralin?
At this moment, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sale of certain property along East Butler Road to South Carolina Department of Transportation for the purpose of road improvement as part of the Butler Road Improvement Project and to authorize additional temporary construction easements for that project.
Sir, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for Mr. Reynolds. Note, this is second reading. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve on second reading the sale of certain parcels along East Butler Road to South Carolina DOT or part of their building or better Butler Improvement Project, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries on second reading. Ms. Miller?
First reading. The first ordinance we have for first reading is an ordinance to rezone a two-acre portion of a property located at Fowler Circle.
Ms. Miller, I believe this has come in out of Business Development Services, Mr. Steenback?
Sir, thank you, mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we rezone the two-acre portion property located at Fowler Circle from C1 to RM.
All right, and note this is first reading.
This is first reading.
First reading.
First reading.
All right, I have a motion from Mr. Steenback, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Matney, any discussion?
Mr. Steenback? I just have one quick comment. You know, this is one of, this is, I would say, one of a smaller project in this particular area, but there, you know, there's the ongoing concern, I've heard consistently, even share myself with that particular intersection and the, you know, the, the burden that's going to be put on that, especially with no turn lane and things like that. So really, I would like to see us continue to, you know, the, the city staff, I know we're working on that, but making sure we're continuing to look at that and how we can address that going forward because the, the interest in that area is not going to go down. It's only going to go up and continue to become an issue there.
I think Mr. Duncan will stay on top of that with the staff to work on some of those improvements. Anyone else? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve on first reading the rezoning from this parcel out on Fowler Circle from C1 to RM, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Here none, the motion carries unanimously. Next item, this would come before us, it's committee, the whole, if I may, first question for Mr. Duncan is, why would this not have come through the PW Committee?
Yes, sir, so typically, items like this would have come through, however, two re-
However, two reasons come to mind. One, we just had a conversation with, we had a conversation right around Thanksgiving with FEMA and the South Carolina Department of Emergency Management. And they were giving us some initial guidance on how we should continue to take care of our debris cleanup. But then just last Monday, we also had a follow-on, much more intense and in-depth conversation that gave us better guidance on how to seek out and resolve our final debris schedule. And so, out of the need to expedite that removal process, we are bringing this to a committee, the whole item, instead of running through the committee process in January. So that way, we could expedite, if council approves, the final cleanup throughout the city. And so those are the two reasons why I wanted to note that.
Okay. And I would ask the council to consider the section 8B, B of the informal method. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion. Motion for Mr. Mattney. Is there a second?
Second.
King, and I think Mr. Reynolds. So Ms. Cindy can work that one out. All those in favor of the consideration of the question? Well, actually, we don't have to have a vote on that. It's just the informal method. We can go straight to the comment period. So are there any comments, questions? Mr. Mattney.
I just want to thank all of the city's departments, specifically Public Works, for all of the work that's been done so far. And I know that social media often has its detractors. And there are folks that say that we haven't done enough around the city. However, I think if you look at other parts of the county that are still trying to dig out, we're second to none. Our folks have put in blood, sweat, tears, time, effort, lost sleep, lost dreams to make sure that this city was back up and running. And I thank them for that and look forward to voting on this piece so that we can finally get everything cleaned up and then hopefully get reimbursed by FEMA afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Anyone else?
Just, Mr. Duncan, could you kind of go through the FEMA, what we spent, what this is going to be adding to it? To kind of what you walked me through?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. So the request tonight is for $750,000 for final debris removal from Hurricane Helene storm damage. The funding request will be in addition to the funds already spent and would be appropriated from unassigned fund balance from the general fund. Essentially, what we have is initially, right after the storm, council approved at two separate time periods, ultimately, $750,000 to tackle our initial storm debris. We reached out and hired a contractor. We followed our emergency procurement policy, which allowed us to bring in Bell Moore. Bell Moore was able to help us quickly address some of the worst-hit areas and get those streets back open. However, in working with FEMA, while that procurement was sufficient for the emergency situation, as residents continued to put debris out, including large tree trunks, brush, and root balls, that RFP would not be sufficient for us to go back and clean it again or any of the additional debris that came out post the time we were out there. So we put out an RFP in order to find a contractor who would be able to help assist this if council were to move forward with this idea. In conversations with FEMA, we wanted to make sure and be confident that any additional funding assigned, and especially coming from unassigned fund balance, that there would be either an absolute or a strong likelihood of getting those FEMA dollars reimbursed. So we have concluded that RFP. We have three contractors. We believe that the likely most responsible contractor is going to be Bell Moore again. Two others had applied, one from the Charleston region, one from Florida. But we felt comfortable with the price scheme and plan of attack that Bell Moore would likely be able to do a good job for us again. And they are an in-city contractor. So in addition to that, our goal was to have all the final debris removed by the end of January, which would allow us to submit our reimbursement, hopefully by no later than March 31st. And according to FEMA officials last week and SCEMD officials, is that we're looking at a reimbursement process of about six to nine months. Final project closeout could take a year plus more after that. But at least, we would be seeing, most likely, a return of our initial allocation plus this additional allocation and actually some additional costs that we've put in, including management time, organizing, overseeing this application process, and all of the documentation requirements that we have to fulfill. Plus also, some things that we hadn't thought about, which was a great conversation last week about the fuel we used to keep City Hall powered and our fire stations powered through the duration of the emergency. A lot of those things that we hadn't anticipated getting reimbursed are going to be eligible for reimbursement. So our goal is to, if council approves this tonight, is to work as diligently as possible with our contractor and with staff to finalize the clean out. And as soon as we're done with the clean out, then we could submit for a reimbursement. And my personal goal is to hopefully see those funds back before the end of calendar year '25.
So if we take the total now?
Yes, sir. The total spent to date from allocated funds is $750,000. We have spent a little bit more on budget, from budgeted funds, just doing the debris management ourselves. And then we, with this, we believe that, based on our calculation, there should be enough to complete the job, plus what we're doing. And we'll be able to, so our all-in will be about 1.5 million, plus some a little bit additional that may have been staffed. That, there is a few elements of what we have that probably won't be reimbursed, but it's nothing significant.
So we've spent one and a half million dollars plus, or will be.
We, that's.
For the cleanup. People ask us what we've done, what this city has done. Significantly.
Yes, sir. And while I think it's important to note that the contractor before and the contractor future, if council approves, it's all paid for by the city of Malden. The way that this reimbursement works for FEMA is that FEMA reimburses eligible expenses after a project conclusion. So for us, we're just a category A and B, and I could do 20 minutes on all that. But the idea there is that we're mostly storm debris and emergency response. So we'll be able to close those two projects, hopefully quickly, get that reimbursement submitted. But it has been the city of Malden that's been doing the cleanup, either via contractor or via staff directly. And FEMA is just a reimbursement process. And it actually gets sent from FEMA to SCEMD, and then EMD provides the funding to us.
Thank you, Mr. Craylon. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So without your best guesstimation, do we anticipate that we would receive reimbursement for the entire million and a half? Or are we closer to seven?
I think we're going to be, yes, sir. I think we're going to be higher. We'll probably be, without knowing all the final figures just yet, since they gave us some more things to look at. So for example, we knew that the easy stuff, the consumables we used during the storms, such as chainsaws, blades, things like that. But they actually gave us some ideas on ways to recapture our pump stations, for example. When our pump stations didn't have power, they were all running off of generators. Well, all of the fuel used during that time period is reimbursable too. So we've got more homework to do to go and start pulling bills and creating the documentation necessary to get those. But we could actually exceed the 1.5 allocation that council did. But those were costs that we incurred that were above and beyond what we normally would have had there not been a storm. So for a final total, I'll have that to council, probably right around submission time, so February to March. We'll have a clearer picture of exactly what we're looking at.
Okay. I think from my point of view, this is potentially more of a wash transaction for the city. At worst-case scenario, it's, what? We extend 1.5 million or 100,000? Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. I think we're going to be close to 1.5 million reimbursed, maybe slightly.
Good.
Absolutely. So there's a system that they have. If you're below 1,37,000, you're a small project, you can have things done much more quickly. However, knowing that we've got expenses that exceed that significantly, we didn't feel like the trade-off was worth it. Let's just go for the, we'll take the long road. We'll go through the extensive documentation requirements necessary, and we'll seek every penny we can get back.
Well, no. And as I consider stuff like this, I think it's a necessity, so we have to do it. But I'm thinking also, on the long game, of what's that look like potentially as a reimbursement?
Yeah. I'm hoping, I'm targeting 1.5.
Yep. That's all I need. Thank you. That's all I have, Ms. Mayor.
For Allgood.
Thank you, Mayor. Has there been a deadline set for citizens on when they should get their, make sure that all their debris is out?
So it's, there's not a hard deadline necessarily. But what we did just last week, as we posted on social media, four graphics that showed debris piles. We actually went out and geotagged all the debris piles, the root balls, anything that was in the public right away that needed to be disposed of. So we encouraged the public to go ahead and look at those maps. If they see something that's missing off of that map, and this is not standard debris, like our standard limb, leaf, you know, brush. I was out, you know, cleaning out the garden, and that's not what we're looking at. We're looking at storm-related debris, the tree trunks, the root balls are out there, the massive debris piles. And so we went and geotagged. We asked the public to say, hey, take a look at these. If there's anything missing, let us know. So we're continuing to receive comments and feedback. But I think we pretty much have everything. But, so now what we're going to do is with the contractor, is use those maps in a plan of attack and start knocking all of those dots out that were on that map. And so, so by effect, there's kind of a, let's have it on the curb. But it's not one of those where the significant stuff is there. I don't think there's too many more significant things to come out at this point.
I would just, again, anything we can do to encourage the public, if they haven't gotten it to the curb, get it to the curb.
Yes, sir.
So the action before us in this would be to authorize staff to draw from the unassigned fund balance an amount not to exceed $750,000 to be used for our debris pickup. If I did it in my head correctly, the timing on this was we would close out fiscal year '20. I guess we're in '25 right now? So we would close that out, showing this as the expense, drawdown from unassigned. But the refund, if we get it, when we get it, from FEMA would be in next year's fiscal budget. Timing, just timing wise. Good there. Anything else from council? Here and none, all those in favor of authorizing staff to draw down from the unassigned fund balance an amount not to exceed $750,000 for final debris removal from the hurricanes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here and none, the motion carries unanimous. Thank you, council. That returns us to our normal agenda, public comment. Didn't see anyone else signed up. We'll move on from there. Anyone online? Always tend to forget that. All right, good. Next item, council concerns. Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, you know, you don't get a death or a resurrection without a birth. And we're quickly coming up on that. And I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a safe and Happy New Year. And may '25 give us all grace, strength, peace, and comfort.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Mr. Steenback.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to publicly say thank you to council and staff. Everyone, this marks my first, the end of my first year on council. And I've just been so thankful to all our staff and to you all for helping me learn, I get up to speed, including me. And I think it's pretty amazing and pretty wonderful to be a part of this. And I do not think there are many municipalities in our state or in this country that have as good a working relationship on their council as we do. And so for that, I'm thankful and I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. When that comes, it's at Parliament, they all pound on the desk when it's that day. Good job, Mr. Steenback. Appreciate that very much. And Mr. Mattney, sentiments there. Anyone else? Here and none, we have a call for executive sessions. There's two items there, one economic development, one would be probably Public Works. Would Mr. Mattney?
Mayor, I move we enter executive session for an economic development matter related to Bridgeway Station and to consider negotiations incident of proposed contractual arrangements and proposed sale or purchase of property, each allowed under 32-4-782.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Here and none, all those in favor of the motion to enter into executive session for the previous two announced items, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here and none, we will consider ourselves in executive session at 7:44 PM. Now that we're off, just a quick.
I got a motion for you. If you're ready.
All right. Council has returned to chambers from executive session at approximately 9:34 PM. Mr. Reynolds, would you like to report out?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reporting out at 9:35 PM from executive session. No decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Thank you, sir. Next item is 11C, possible action on items discussed in executive session. Pleasure, council. Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we authorize the mayor and/or his designee to execute a letter of intent and for the mayor and/or his designee to execute a, negotiate and execute a purchase-sale agreement on property discussed in executive session and add to that an amount not to exceed $20,000 for due diligence activities.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Here and none, all those in favor of the motion that Mr. Mattney just laid down. I'm not going to repeat it. But a letter of intent and a purchase-sales agreement and not to exceed $20,000 for due diligence. I think that's the root of it, anyway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Here and none, the motion carries unanimous. Any other items? Seeing none, what's the council pleasure on adjournment?
I move. Second.
That was from, oh, Mr. Reynolds, and seconded by Mr. Steenback. Get him on record today. Good. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here and none, we are adjourned. Merry Christmas.